Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 16th meeting of the Stanley County Board of Commissioners. Appreciate everyone coming this evening. If you will, join Vice Chairman McIntyre and he'll give our invocation and then join him with pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you for the many blessings. Dear Father, we ask that you be with those who are protecting us daily or who are helping us daily as EMTs do, all those that are in those fields, whether they're here or abroad. Please be with them, let them know your presence. And dear Father, we just ask that you be with us during this meeting, that as we go about the county's business, that we make decisions that would be pleasing in your sight and it will be for the best benefit of our citizens. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Commissioners, we've got... County Manager would like to make a recommendation, I guess, so I would kindly ask if we add item one for an introduction for the County Manager. Anyone else has any other adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion approve that.
Motion from Commissioner Effer. I have a second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Morgan, I believe. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Andy, take over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure this evening to have the opportunity to recognize and let you all meet our new DSS, Social Services/Assistant Human Services Director, Ms. Dolly Clayton. Dolly is here this evening. Today was her first day of work with Stanley County, and so I'm sure she's been inundated with information and meetings, but wanted the opportunity to... She said she was going to be here this evening, and I said, "Well, I'm going to take the opportunity to introduce you." Dolly most recently was in Caswell County, and before that, she was the Health Director in Caswell County. Before that, she was a licensed clinical social worker and has a master's in social work. She was a social worker in both Chatham County and Cumberland County, because she has a wealth of experience on both the public health side and the social services side. And so we're looking, as we go forward with our consolidation efforts, I think, you know, her strategic mindset, I am working with our new Human Services Director, who will be on board February 5th, David Jenkins, I think the two of them will work really closely together to try to, you know, to better coordinate some of our services in that multidisciplinary approach to service delivery so that we can improve the outcomes of our clients, which obviously is, at the end of the day, that's why we're here. So I just didn't know if you wanted to say a few words, Dolly, and then if any of the board members have any questions.
Yeah, I'm really excited to be here and excited for the future and what it's going to mean for the citizens of Stanley County, and excited to be a part of the team and to be able to be here and work and move in this new direction that we're going in.
Thank you. Commissioners, does anyone have a question? For Dolly?
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Welcome to Stanley County.
All right. I appreciate that, Mr. Manager. All right, item two, economic development. Our presenter is Michael Smith, our EDC Director. Good evening, Michael. Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for giving us time this evening. I have two items to bring before you. The first is Economic Development Incentive Grant for Carolina Staylight. This is a company that will create 14 new jobs and invest 1.3 million of new taxable investment in Stanley County, and we would like to request a property incentive grant of 75% for a five-year period.
Thank you, Michael. Does anyone have any questions before we have a public hearing? Michael? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing open. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak for or against this project? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve a 75% property tax incentive grant for a period of five years for the addition investment of 1.3 million and the creation of 14 new jobs by Carolina Staylight.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Lawhan, a second by Commissioner Louder. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. And we've got... Oh, County Manager Andy Lucas.
I'd like to also say that that is actually, and Michael, you may want to expound on this, but that was actually part, or Phase A of a two-part planned expansion. So we're anticipating that this will, over the period of the next three to five years, that this will, their investment in job creation will actually increase. So you may want to just quickly speak to that, Michael.
Absolutely. This company, it's a North Carolina-based company with several different operations in different parts of our state. One of the things that's exciting about what they do is they have a significant international presence that I think we should all be proud of. Another thing is they're making use of natural resources that are only found here in this part of the world, literally. Their second phase potentially will be significantly larger than this phase, so it is very important to have this support, and it's a very exciting project for Stanley County.
Absolutely. Thank you, Michael.
Mr. Chairman.
I just had a quick question. When do they begin the Phase One, I guess?
Very shortly, very shortly. And, you know, as things continue to improve, they look for Phase Two. And again, we will get information out certainly to the public on the existing facilities, and this particular grant will do that in terms of helping this business and their startup and helping reconfigure an existing building. What we are... This particular project will invest over 3 million and create 50 new jobs in Stanley County. They're looking to upfit a vacant 55,000-square-foot building. What we would ask is that the board consider approving the resolution of a show of support for the building reuse application that we have put into the North Carolina Department of Commerce, and the required match is 5%, which in this case is $17,500. One last thing to add is with the competitive nature of this project, we may be back before you in future weeks to request county assistance with the grant program.
Thank you, Michael. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swain.
I actually have two questions now. I'll ask Scott, so that he can just ask over here. Where is this building located?
Building's in the city of Almaral.
Okay. And my other question is, would this grant take...
Any other questions for Michael? County Manager?
The way that grant works is they'll actually submit their receipts from the construction project. The company's actually required to put forth at least 50% of the cost, and so they'll submit all their applications, and then we'll get, we'll have the funds that will be drawn down from the state for that grant, and then we'll repay the contractor for that work.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swain.
I move to approve the resolution that's been presented here before us, as well as approve the application for the 5% match in the amount of $17,500.
Got a motion from Commissioner Swain, a second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you for all your hard work, Michael. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, item three, Community Health Assessment Survey Information. Ms. Debbie Bennett, come forward, Debbie.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you and speak tonight. I have some exciting news, at least to me. But the Stanley County Health Department and the Carolina Healthcare System Stanley, we are working together to conduct the 2008 Community Health Assessment. Now, the major component of this is a survey, and I have been told by several of you that you have completed a survey, and I say, "Bravo!" And for the rest of you that may have and haven't told me, that's okay. And the ones of you that have not, I say, "Go to your computer and fill out a survey," because it's very important. You are eligible to do that because you are over 15 years of age. So anyone 15 years and older, anybody who is a resident of Stanley County is eligible to complete a survey, and we encourage, especially guys, the males do not, they keep having their wives do it. That's what I have observed on many occasions. So it would be great if everybody, male, female, 15 to 85, 95, 100, doesn't matter, would complete a survey. And it's really important because we take these results, and the results are compiled according to ZIP code, they're compiled according to gender, an overall one is done, marital status, race, we break it down. And the Health Department develops action plans. The hospital uses it to develop its plans. Different agencies and groups use this information, this community needs assessment results or report, to obtain grants. Because if you're going after a grant anytime, usually they ask for a needs assessment. It can be very time-consuming, so when the Health Department does it, we share it with everybody, and they can go after money. And we can even, this is really a nice part of this, is sometimes we'll have a local municipality say, "We'd like to know what's going on in our county," or "We're going after a grant." We can actually break it down for them so they can see exactly what's going on in their municipality. And again, occasionally, we'll have a city that says, "We'd like to know what's going on," and we will be happy to share that information with them. Now, the important part is to complete a survey. Now, this means nothing to me. You can see all those letters, WW this and WW that, but here's a nice, easy way to do it. Either go to the Health Department's website or the hospital's website by February 28th and complete one. Have your family, do a family gathering around it. Make it a fun event. Bring hot cocoa, whatever, but fill out a survey. It will be enjoyable. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight, and I really appreciate your consideration to complete one of these wonderful surveys. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Appreciate all your enthusiasm, too. We enjoy it. All right, item four, brings us to item four, Farm Service Agency Nominee Recommendations. Presenter, Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. You've got the information in your packet. The nominations for the Farm Service Agency Advisory Committee are due no later than January 19th, which is this Friday. So I'd be more happy to answer any questions. I know in speaking with some of you before the meeting that some of you have prepared some names for suggestions for the rest of the board to consider. So again, if you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. Thank you.
Any questions or nominees?
Chairman Burleson.
Commissioner Louder.
I have four names to submit for nomination. That would be Ms. Doris Herlocker, Ms. Becky Fur, Mr. Chris Carruthers, and Mr. Brian Burleson.
Okay, I've got four names from Commissioner Louder. I guess we need that in the form of a motion to send those nominees. Is that in the form of a... Got a motion from Commissioner Louder to submit those four names for consideration. I have a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second from Commissioner Effer, I think I heard first. Any discussion or questions on that? What is the pleasure... Oh, excuse me. We've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Sorry about that. I'm trying to write these names down. Item five, Town of Norwood ABC Board Appointment. Presenter, Andy Lucas.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Charles Morris Glenn had requested not to be reappointed. We have been, the board and certain members of the board have been working with representatives of towns in Norwood to get a name, to submit an application for a couple of months now. And finally, we have at least one application for the board to consider. I believe his name is Mr. Jim McSwain. And so that is the application you have before you this evening. This information actually came from members of the town of Norwood in terms of this name, and then our staff reached out to him and assisted him with completing the application. So if you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that Jim McSwain be appointed to the Norwood ABC Board.
Got a motion from Commissioner Lawhan, second from Commissioner Louder. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. We're on the roll, folks. Item six, Budget Calendar. Andy Lucas.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just want to set the formal calendar for our 2018-2019 budget process. Hard to believe that we're coming up on that already, but with the board's retreat here on February 9th, we'll really start to kick into high gear in terms of preparation behind the scenes before departments start filling out their budget requests beginning in mid-March. So you have the calendar before you. This sort of gives you key dates, and obviously, there's some flexibility later with respect to the budget workshops. We've just starred those and set those as, you know, potentially potential dates to consider, but certainly don't have to take any formal action to lock those in this evening. But this calendar just really gives the board or the staff some direction in terms of benchmarks that we need to hit to stay on target, to get the budget adopted before June 30th. Did highlight in yellow a joint meeting with the school board and the community college. I know that the school board expressed some interest at a past meeting of meeting with us. I know that they're in the process of potentially getting a new superintendent in place, so I think once that occurs, we may have a better idea when we could potentially meet with them. And it's been a couple of years since we've met with the community college board trustees. Probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have a joint meeting with them this year, just to... I think they're working on their strategic plan, the three-year or five-year plan, and so probably just to hear from them of where they are with that and what some of their goals are would be good for us in terms of planning on the capital side, because I'm sure it's going to require money in terms of an ask. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, but this is sort of just something we do every year to kind of establish some working parameters for developing the budget.
All right, everyone has the proposed calendar from staff. Any questions, comments? What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to accept the calendar.
Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre to accept the calendar presented, a second from Commissioner Morgan. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right, that brings us to item seven. I believe this one's mine. This is a resolution supporting HR 38 Concealed Carry Reciprocity Act of 2017. I ask for this to be added. Just kind of a background on the reason this came up, something that kind of was brought to my attention time and again. I typically take a few hunting trips every year and traveling from different states. It's, you can slip up and break the law and not even know it if you're not careful. With the concealed carry laws, and you travel, you know, halfway across the country and you go through, you know, four, five, six, eight states, it would be nice to have a universal law concerning concealed carry, and this is something our congressman is trying to do, so I have put together a resolution of support, and I think everyone has had a chance to read it, but I'll be glad to read it for the audience. This is a resolution of support for HR 38 Concealed Carry Reciprocity Act of 2017. Whereas HR 38 Concealed Carry Reciprocity Act was introduced in the United States House of Representatives on January 3rd, 2017, by Representative Richard Hudson, and whereas Concealed Carry Reciprocity Act was passed by the House of Representatives in bipartisan fashion on December 6th, 2017, and whereas HR 38 allows for law-abiding permitted citizens to travel the country with a means of personal protection without the fear of violating state laws in accordance with the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution, and whereas concealed carry permit holders are among the most law-abiding citizens in the country, and whereas the Stanley County Board of Commissioners are responsible for promoting the safety and well-being of the citizens of Stanley County. Now therefore be it resolved, the Stanley County Board of Commissioners expresses its support of the Concealed Carry Reciprocity Act in hopes of the bill soon becoming law, and be it further resolved, the Stanley County Board of Commissioners directs staff to share copies of this resolution upon adoption with each member of the North Carolina Federal Legislative Delegation, adopted this 16th day of January 2018.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman McIntyre.
I would like to make a motion that we accept this and support this, and it was my understanding, I read about this in the paper, that different states have different laws regulating concealed carry permits. This permits you to carry it, but once you enter another state, then you're under their laws, is the way I understood that, to read, so, which is, can be good. I just think people need to know that, that just because you've got the permit carry doesn't mean that you can act in Tennessee the same way you act in North Carolina necessarily. I'm just, that's for instance. But this is already passed, I think the House, not sure the Senate's passed it yet, but I do make the motion to support this resolution.
Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre. I have a second. Second from Commissioner Morgan. Any further discussions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, fellow board members, for your support. That brings us to item eight, the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion from Commissioner Lawhan. I have a second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Effer. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Public comments. Didn't have anyone sign up on the list. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing none. Got a board comments. Commissioner Morgan?
No comment.
Mr. Lawhan?
Yes, sir. I know Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Swain, and I attended Martin Luther King breakfast this past Saturday. I enjoyed the speaker. He talked about building bridges, and we all need to be about building bridges to move things forward, and I thought he did a very good job. I enjoyed the presentation this past Saturday. Also want to let you know, I attended a Central Indiana Council of Government meeting last Wednesday, I believe it was, and Central Indiana Council of Government's getting ready to celebrate their 50th year as an organization which is made up of about, I don't know, 10, 12 counties. We're a member of the Central Indiana Council of Government. We've got a speaker, a special speaker for our meeting with all delegates. I invite you, Commissioner Morgan, because you're the alternate, which makes you a delicate. Governor Jim Martin's going to be our speaker on February 7th, and I think it'll be a very interesting presentation by former Governor Martin, and I encourage you to come and attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawhan. Vice Chairman McIntyre?
No comment.
Mr. Swain?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo Commissioner Lawhan's words about the prayer breakfast on Saturday morning. It was a wonderful event, again, a great speaker, who passed a lot of ideas on to the audience that was there that could really hit home in any situation, but especially in remembrance of Dr. King, who we celebrated yesterday. I think it was, again, a wonderful event. The other thing coming up, and I'll send this out to you guys in an email, but I would like to also invite you, on January 30th or 31st, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is having an education committee meeting to discuss an upcoming, potential upcoming statewide bond for school buildings, improvements, and things like that. I'm also going to invite the school board members. I serve on that committee. I've only been to two meetings, because I just started this past year, but it is, they do do some good stuff for schools in the state of North Carolina, but we were asked to invite other commissioners as well as the school board, because it's going to be an open committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Swain. Commissioner Effer?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I got to attend my first senior center advisory board meeting this past Thursday. Had a great time. Your seniors are hard at work here in Stanley County. Just one little quick thing I wanted to make you aware of, this board approved a feasibility study back this past, last year, about the satellite senior center either in Locust or Norwood, somewhere in Stanley County. Data based on, information based on the data come back from COG. They're going to be having open houses in Norwood and in Locust. They're shooting for February the 20th. As soon as I get the date, it'll be probably in the morning at Locust and in the afternoon at Norwood. As soon as I get that date pinned down, I will let you know. But I had a great meeting, a lot of things going on there at the senior center. I enjoyed it, so thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Effer. Please, please get ahold of me when that date comes out. Commissioner Louder?
No comment.
No comment. All right. I would just like to say, this evening's been a great evening. We've announced that we're going to have 64 new jobs in Stanley County, and with that, these folks are going to be buying houses, you know, stopping at local cafes. Hopefully, these will be very well-paying jobs. I'm sure they are. My activities lately, I was in Raleigh on Thursday and Friday, got to attend a committee meeting on the judicial redistricting on Thursday in the Legislative Office Building, and got to hear a couple hours of comments there. It was a good meeting. On Friday, I attended the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Chairman's training, and it was informative. Got to sit with county managers, county attorneys, other commissioners, chairman from around the state, and it seems, talking to them, some of our struggles that we have in Stanley County are also struggles that are in Davidson County and some of the counties down east. So it's a common thing, and sometimes we're in the same boat, and we can find out where things worked in other counties, and, you know, maybe that will help us. And we had a great day and enjoyed the time there with some folks from around the county, and got to do some training exercises. It was a great time. With that said, any comments from staff or anything? We have one closed session item, and that is to consult with the attorney in accordance with General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Make a motion to recess this meeting and go into closed session.
Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre, second from Commissioner Swain. All in favor, please say aye.